Hello and welcome to the Monday, September 12th, 2022 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on September 8th, 2022, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Can we please take roll?
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here.
And Mr. Mariney?
Here. We have a quorum. I have all the motions moved into executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may exclude the public from the portion of the meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required. It's written in 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough, of the County of Somerset, and the State of New Jersey as follows. The matters to discuss are superintendent's search and personnel matters. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public, and the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll return from exec around 7:30. Thank you. Hello and welcome back to the Monday, September 12th, 2022 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. We'd like to begin with roll call.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here.
Ms. Trujillo?
Here.
And Mr. Mariney?
Here. We have a quorum. Let's stand for the Pudge of Legions.
The Pudge of Legions is required by the past states of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice overall.
All right, I'd like to acknowledge the correspondents as listed. We don't have any committee reports tonight, unless there's anybody that has an update on anything. Nope, okay. All right, the Board President's Report, it'll be very short and sweet. As noted on the agenda, we met with the Search Committee tonight, we're making excellent progress, and we are on schedule. And I'd like to welcome Dr. Fishbine for his first Board of Ed meeting. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, I think I'm just reading the population. Yeah. All right, and Item 7.2, National Suicide Prevention Month Proclamation. Whereas September is known throughout the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, an initiative intended to help raise awareness that prevention is possible, treatment is effective, and people do recover; and whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background; whereas according to the United States Center for Disease Control, each year more than 46,000 people die by suicide; and whereas suicide is the fourth-leading cause of death among adults in the U.S., and the second-leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 34, and is one of the most tragic events a family and community can experience; and whereas Hillsborough, a stigma-free community, is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state that it lends its full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, scout leaders, police officers, and parents, as community partners are being available to one another; and whereas in these challenging times, messages of hope and healing are needed now more than ever; and whereas Borough Saves Goal to Raise Community Awareness That Suicide is Preventable, residents are encouraged to educate themselves on the warning signs of suicide, understand suicide is preventable, and that there are resources available; and whereas if anyone is in crisis or experiencing suicidal thoughts, call the National Suicide Hotline at 988. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the Hillsborough Township Board of Education, hereby declare September 2022 as National Suicide Awareness Month, and vow to continue to support suicide awareness programs dedicated to helping our community. All right, and we will now move on to the interim superintendent's report.
Good evening and welcome to the new school year. It's a pleasure to introduce myself, I'm Dan Fishbine, I'm going to be the interim superintendent of schools until this board appoints a permanent superintendent. It's been an exciting time to visit our schools over the last two weeks and be part of an opening that's a little bit more typical this year than it has been for the last few years. There's nothing like the sound of students in school, fill in the hallways, outside on the playgrounds, enjoying themselves, laughing, and being excited about being in school. So our teachers and administrators have once again made their schools safe, happy, and wonderful places to learn and grow. Just a reminder, in accordance with the new HIB legislation that passed on June 13th, 2022, revisions to our policy 5512, harassment, intimidation, and bullying were approved by the Board of Education. There have been significant changes in the new law, and Ms. Smedley, Director of Counseling and District Anti-Bullying Specialist, has been working to update our process and forms. On October 10th, the Board of Education is going to receive some training at 6:30. Okay, I think there was a mistake last meeting, they said 10:30. I don't stay up that late. And David Nash, an attorney and director for legal education and national outreach for the Foundation of Education Administration, will provide the board training on the updated law and policy. Some teacher recognition, I'd like to recognize Hillsborough Middle School Literacy Teacher, Mr. Ian Evans, who has been chosen as the Somerset County Teacher of the Year. Mr. Evans was chosen for this award after being selected as Hillsborough Middle School Teacher of the Year last year. At a recent award ceremony, Mr. Evans was recognized for his reflective practice, thorough thoughtfulness, willingness to listen, and be creative. Thank you, Mr. Evans, for all you do for your students each and every day. I'd also like to recognize Hillsborough High School Social Studies Teacher, Mr. Robert Fenster, who was recently named NEA Foundation Global Learning Fellow. Over the next year, fellows will immerse themselves in online courses, webinars, reading, and reflection that includes a two-day professional workshop and an international field study. The cohort field study investigates historical and cultural context of the country they visit, including its educational system. It's exciting to share that next summer, Mr. Fenster, field study country is South Africa. Congratulations for this honor. Every year I like to give a little snapshot of where we are and a little bit of where we were. So I'm not going to go through all the numbers, but you can see on the screen behind me where we are as far as enrollment is concerned. One area to note is Woods Road Elementary, you see the asterisk there. So that is a program for three- and four-year-olds, and those students age in, you know, at three and four. So if they become three and need the services, they'll go to the programs if they've identified to need those services, and that program grows as the school year goes. The enrollment for that is very different than like kindergarten. A lot of work went into revising and developing new courses in the area of curriculum. I thank Kim for all the hard work and all the supervisors who did that. So there's quite a bit that went on this summer. And in HR, we hired quite a few new teachers. Some of the 67 were hired in the spring, so you can see that a lot of hiring took place in this district throughout the summer and in the spring to make sure that we have the people we need to operate the district. Facility upgrades, as you can imagine, our buildings are full of kids and staff during the school year, so the summer months, you know, every school in the whole country is trying to get all their work done. So a lot of work was done this year, and right now we're at the tail end of the referendum. As far as IT is concerned, a little bit different than construction, but a lot of the work that takes place as far as our IT department is concerned is done during the summer, especially when you look at intercom emergency alert, digital hallway speakers, you know, all that was done in the spring and during the summer. So I appreciate all the work that was done, all the administrators and staff members who worked to make sure that our buildings are ready. You can see by the shine on the floor that our custodians worked real hard, and in a few months, because of all the little feet, the shine will be a little bit duller, but that only means that it's because it's being used for the right purposes.
That's all I have. All right, thank you. All right, now we'll move on to approval of minutes. 9-1 through 9.4, motion to approve executive session minutes 8:22-22, motion to approve public minutes 8:22-22, motion to approve public minutes 8:24-22, and motion to approve executive session minutes 8:24-22. Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All right, do roll. We roll. And any abstentions before we do? All in favor? Nope? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll move on to comments from the board public. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there'll be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open to public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district. As per Bylaw 0167, before you state your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act, the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein, do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. If anybody has any comments they would like to make, please address the action item, agenda number, and we're going to do our best to hold to the three minutes here. I know we've been getting a little loose with that in recent weeks.
Reverend Rod Williams, 101 Everclose. Welcome, Dr. Fishbine, glad to have you in the mix. You mentioned the higher stats on new teachers there, and so I'm wondering if we know anything about the diversity breakdown in terms of those numbers, and if there are plans to focus on the need to make the staff more diverse, especially since the school district itself has become more diverse in terms of student population.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Henry Goody, Hillsborough Education Association. Just before I get to my action agenda, I would like to thank the board and the administration for recognizing Mr. Evans as the County Teacher of the Year. We're incredibly proud of that. We're also incredibly proud that this is the second time in a very short period of time that Hillsborough, one of our members, one of your employees, has been recognized as County Teacher of the Year, and we also have had the ESP of the Year for the county as well. So it's wonderful to see that our district and our members continue to be recognized for their excellence in their respective fields. Related to the action agenda, I would just like to speak to Item 13.5, which is the submission of the application for stabilization aid, and that is to commend everyone for coming together and taking the steps to do that. It's been a number of years that we've encouraged the board and the administration to do that, and this is one of the first times that we've actually followed through with seeking that aid out and trying to recover some of the loss under S2 that has so dramatically impacted our schools, so I do thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Stefania Lockwood, Millstone River Road. Sorry, I have a broken phone. I'm speaking regarding 12.2, retirements and resignations. It's become a bit of a broken record around here that, you know, we're seeing a lot of turnover, but it's especially troublesome to see, to me as a former teacher, retirements where people are choosing to take their retirement mid-year, that the moment they can get out of the building, they're gone. Every single teacher that I worked with when I was teaching retired, waited until the end of the year because of the stability that it provides to their students and the investment that they have in their careers even at the end. And that's really troubling, and it speaks to me that we still have a lot of work to do on culture and retention, because we can't even get people to wait out a few more months. It's also especially troublesome to see people who, in the resignations, again, from my experience, seem to have found a greener pasture late in the summer despite this year's drought, and are leaving our district with significant vacancies in the mid-year. Again, it's not something that I ever saw happen in a district that was thriving in terms of culture for its staff. So this is troubling, and I hope that the board has, as part of its, excuse me, as part of its hiring process for the new superintendent, taken this into consideration, the importance of developing culture, because the evidence continues to pile up in front of us just how unappealing Hillsborough can be to some of our staff members, and that's a shame, it really is, because we do have great staff members, and it'd be really nice to retain them and have them be here for their career. I actually, just as a little, I got an email from someone in HR at work, and I'd never seen this before, and their signature included "hire to retire," which is corny, but it's a neat, powerful little cliche, "hire to retire," and I think that we should take that to heart here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the action agenda? All right, we'll move forward with the action agenda.
I'd like to present for consideration 11-1, professional travel-related expenses. 11-2, stipend for after-school language extended exploration program, LEAP. 11-3, concurrent enrollment courses and stipends for the 2022, 2022, 2023 school year. 11.4, attending AP Computer Science and Project STEM Professional Development. 11-5, administer the measure of developmental, developing English language model proficiency 11-6, curriculum writing. 11-7, overnight trip. 11-8, memorandum agreement between King University Diversity Council on Global Education and Citizenship in the Hillsborough Township Public Schools. 11-9, policies for the second reading.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board?
11.8. Is there, does this have to be in the vote this evening, or, because I was just curious for a little bit more information on it.
So this is a partnership with Kain so that our staff can take graduate courses through Kain University, and they take them as a cohort here on campus.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll take roll.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Mariney?
Yes, motion passes.
Human Resources, I'd like to present for consideration a sidebar agreement. 12.2, approved retirements and resignations. 12.3, approved leave of absences. 12.4, revised appointments for this year. 12.5, contract change. 12.6, transfer and change in assignments. 12.7, approved leave of absence. 12.8, approved appointments. 12.9, affirm appointments in the summer. And 12.10, approved mentors and buddies for the school year. 12.11, approved six- and seven-period coverages. 12.12, approved extra coverage. 12.13, approved summer work and summer athletic camp staff. 12.14, approved group changes.
All right, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Any comments or questions from the board? Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, thanks, Paul. So the topic of retirements, resignations, and hires came up at our retreat, if I'm mistaken, is that correct, Paul?
I believe so.
Yeah, so I think we are waiting for, eventually, after the, you know, after the school year settled down, to get some numbers comparing to the last couple of years. The best way to compare, I think we said, was with hires, right? And see if our, because you mentioned like 67, but then broken down into some other categories today, and how that number would compare to the, to previous years, so we could actually see what this issue is, so we can better tackle it. Is that, that's going to be coming?
I'll reshare that, I shared that last week in the, well, that's why I, but I'll reshare it again.
Is that something that we shared with the public, like on something?
No.
We can do that. Yeah, that's right, that's right, because I know we talked about it, we got some backup on it, but the public has to see that. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll take roll.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Mariney?
Yes, motion passes.
I'd like to present for consideration operations. Approved monthly financials, approved line item transfers. 13.2. 13.3, approved financial status. 13.4, award professional services contract for nursing services for this year. 13.5, approved submission of application for stabilization aid. 13.6, accept donations. 13.7, approved disposal and sale of obsolete items. 13.8, approved the addendum to a settlement agreement. 13.9, approved settlement agreement.
Can I get a motion in a second on the action agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll move to roll.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Mariney?
Yes, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to the second public comment period. We very much welcome input from the public. During the meetings, there'll be two 30-minute periods of time that the meetings will be open to public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district. As per Bylaw 0167, before you state your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute period limit on public comment, because understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein, do not permit the board to discuss personal issues in public session.
Hi, Jane Stats, 101 Devonshire, Court, Hillsborough. Welcome, Dr. Fishbine. I feel like, I'd like to applaud the collaborative efforts on the part of the board, administration, HEA, and our state legislators that led to the $1 million that the district recently received from the state. I feel like a relative of someone who just won the lottery, because I'm here to ask you to use some of that found money for a specific worthy cause. The lighting and sound systems in the high school auditorium need to be updated and repaired. They have been in inadequate state for many years. The lighting and sound quality do not properly highlight the, sorry, the amazing talents of so many of our students. They also pose potential dangers. A lot of money has repeatedly been spent on the temporary use of outside equipment and personnel. That's obviously a Band-Aid approach. The auditorium is used not only for many student performances, but also for staff meetings and community events. The district has upgraded many other components of our facilities, upgrading the sound and lighting systems would be an equitable use of these additional funds. I mean, I crafted that carefully, probably a little cold and antiseptic, but if anyone has ever seen any of the musicals or plays at the high school, they are fantastic. I mean, they rival professional performances, and it would only be fair to them to give them equipment that better serves what their performances are worthy of, so that we can better view them and hear them, and also for their own safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a bad idea.
Yeah.
It's very encouraging that we have a seemingly well-organized search process for a permanent superintendent, and that it is progressing along well. However, there is the very real possibility that greater than one-third of this Board of Education will be different come January, which means that a full one-third of the people who will be responsible for working with the new superintendent are not going to be responsible for making the decision about who the new superintendent should be. And it truly is a full one-third. Three of you will not be here in January as members. I hope you continue to attend meetings and offer your experience and expertise as stats has done. But it's a little worrisome that what is essentially going to be a lame duck body is going to be making the decision. I don't know what the right answer is. I don't want to be up here, quite frankly, I was joking around with stats about it. I don't want to be up here like Mitch McConnell making Merrick Garland arguments that, you know, we should let the people vote, blah, blah, blah. But I think there is some merit to the fact that potentially nearly half of the board could be different, and that the characteristics of what whoever is interviewing and being decided on now walks into in January could be a very different environment. And given what we've been talking about with turnover, given what we've been talking about with culture, given what we've been talking about with community confidence over the last however many months and years, I don't know what the right answer is, but I hope that that was taken into consideration, that the board will look very different when the new superintendent starts, and that if it was taken into consideration that that could be communicated to the public in a way that the priorities of the search committee of this board, there's some, as much as there can be, guarantee that there will be continuity with those same criteria for the new board. I don't know, I don't know what the right answer is. I wish I could, like I said, I wish I could come up here and say, we should wait till January, gosh darn it, but that leaves us with an interim, no offense, Dr. Fishbine, but that leaves us with an interim longer than maybe necessary. So if there's any communication the board could do on how that's been presented internally with the search committee, with the search organization, maybe some of the pros and cons that were reviewed with the search firm on waiting versus doing it sooner, I think that might help have a little bit more community confidence with knowing that the decision that's being made by this board is a board that is a decision that is setting up next to your board for success. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no others, we will move to, we will close public comment, move to board comment. If there's any.
Come on, please.
I'll make one comment. Obviously, the search- Obviously, the search is very confidential, so we can't share much, but I can say that, you know, we're whittling down our search right now, and I think everybody was unhappy with some part of it, which means that everyone has a diverse slate of candidates, and the candidates are in fact diverse in all ways that you can imagine, and I think we're going to come out of this with a very, very strong superintendent regardless of who we pick at this point. So, you know, we're considering all of those concerns when we move forward. Obviously, with the confidentiality, and that was part of the agreement with almost everybody, that they didn't want their name shared or any information about where they work, et cetera, et cetera. So that's not all I can share with that, but we are moving forward. Mr. Gillette?
Well, I thought it went. We did have at least one, maybe a couple of emails recently about athletic fees, and I comment on this probably once a year since we started collecting athletic fees about three years ago. I'm not really sure how many years now, about three. And the questions usually are about, can we segregate the money collected from athletic fees and segregate, make sure that they go just to athletics? Well, you can't do that. There is no separate account that that can be collected into. But I just want to reassure the public that the money collected from athletic fees only amounts in the aggregate to about 10% to 15% of the entire athletic budget. So it's really, you can, even if you could put it separately, it doesn't really make that, it doesn't do what you think it's doing. That money is not being siphoned off for anything else, believe me. If we collect, you know, $150,000, there's another $850,000 put in by the district. It's more than that all around. But, you know, that's what it is. Now, having said that, we still need to keep collecting those fees, because those now, now that we've started it, and maybe, you know, I was in favor of collecting the fees, and I would like to see them go away in the future, obviously. That's my philosophical position on it. But in the short term now, that's $150,000 is two teachers every year, and you have to continue that until there's another source of funding, maybe down the line, an increase in state aid one of these years, an increase, not a decrease, an increase, which then, even if you don't get another increase the next year, you've still got that increase built in. So then you've got it every year. You've got a million-dollar increase, then you could think about doing things like getting rid of the athletic fees and returning more courtesy busting to the district, things like that. But until we see a big increase in some other funding source, I'm very, you know, disappointed to have to report that those fees are going to have to remain the way they are now for the foreseeable future. That's all I want to say on that. That's my report for this year. Probably my last one ever.
Any other comments from the board? All right. So then I will take the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.